Call meeting to order. Can everyone hear me?
No.
Okay. Seated tonight is Sean Mastrownee, myself, David Rathman, Fred Dykman, Gardner Young, and Peter Shemowitz. Minutes? Enjoy your motion on the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
He's not right.
I refuse myself because I'm here.
Oh, you weren't here?
Yes.
Yeah. Gardner's abstained.
Abstained.
P O C D, no one's here. Staff?
I'm 5D Administrator Review Items. 5D, one Pocket Tuck Middle School Reuse Plan. Discussion of Proposed Project for the Interior Renovations for Town Reuse of Pocket Tuck Middle School. Property located at 40 Field Street, Pocket Tuck. Assessors map 14, block 7, lot 1, zone RA 15. This agenda item, it's not an application before you. It's really something intended to inform the Commission about what the Board of Education's plans are for Pocket Tuck Middle School and just basically assure what the permitting process for this is, if any. With that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Anderson, Facilities Manager for the School Department.
Thanks for having us here. I brought Greg Nucci from Point One Architects here. He's going to give us an explanation and show you some diagrams of what we propose to do. We are putting the Board of Education Office into, or the Board of Education people into Pocket Tuck Middle School, but we are still maintaining a school there with creating an alternate learning center. Best thing to do is have Mr. Nucci show you some of these diagrams and sketches that have been drawn up to show you exactly what would be used in regards to the new school.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Greg Nucci with Point One Architects, and I have a few handouts I'd like to pass.
What you have before you on the first page of that diagram shows what the existing conditions at the school are currently before they, of course, move to the new facilities. And the yellow sections are really the school functions, and then the blue sections on there are offices and administrative. And if you go to the second page, you can see what the Board of Education in blue wants to use for their facilities and their offices. Most of this would be a furniture move. There's not a lot of renovations for the project going on. There's a few classrooms that are going to turn into a conference room. A few of the larger classrooms, they're going to convert into some office space and open office space. And the old industrial arts area, the kind of the long vertical, that is now a training center and an IT hub. So the IT hub is actually going to move to that space. So you can see kind of through the diagram, the alternate education, you know, just based on square footage, is the primary, you know, has the primary square footage of the facility. And I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
That community gathering room, that would, hopefully, that'd be where we could meet. Is that correct?
Correct.
And how many, what's the seating capacity on that would be?
It's fairly large. It's similar to this, actually.
Oh, good. Air condition?
Hopefully.
Yeah. And the other spaces, like the gym and the cafeteria, are still going to function as they always have. They will be, you know, just like there are now after, you know, Park and Rec can use the gym in the evenings, and so that function really doesn't change at all. But during the day, from 8:00 to 4:00, 8:00 to 4:30, you could see the school as the primary square footage of the change. It's going to be, it's allocated for the school fully, completely, so.
Looks great to me. Anyone else have any questions on that? Thank you. How soon is it be done? Next week?
As soon as we can, you know, if we can forego the special permit process, then...
Yeah, and that was one of the main...
That's why we came to talk to you.
It's still an education facility.
Right. That was one of the main points of it, is just to make sure you thought that it wasn't becoming some other type of use, like more like office space that would need a special use permit. But if it's going to, you know, go from a school to essentially a school, new special use permit would be required.
Personally, I don't have any problem. You have any problem with that?
Yeah. But so is there a point where it tips, where the balance tips?
Well, I can say from a building code standpoint, there's going to be less occupants in the building, so from a fire and safety code, it's actually safer because you don't have as many students as you would. For instance, a classroom that's taken over by an office has one or two occupants rather than 26 kids. So we'll be working with the fire marshal and the building official to work out any of the code issues that we have to, but from life safety point of view, it's a lesser use and a safer situation.
The second floor still has all classrooms.
Yep, all classrooms, yeah.
It's still an education facility.
Yeah.
I have no problem. I don't think you need a special use. Anyone else think so?
Thank you very much.
Do you want us to make that a motion?
That might help if it's your consensus here.
Do I have a motion on that?
Wait a second. Any discussion? All of you in favor?
Aye. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it.
I'm 5D, 2PZ, 1839 SPA, JNH Hospitality Mystic. Request change to retaining wall material for approved application for alterations to existing restaurant building associated parking and outdoor space. Property located at 6-8 Tugan Boulevard Mystic. Assessors map 171, block 2, lot 1, zone PC 80. And Mr. Fetis is project engineer's here to address the commission.
My name's Greg Fetis with Fetis Engineering, an office at 70 Essex Street in Mystic, Connecticut, here presenting for Rio Salado, the new Mexican restaurant that was approved previously.
Excuse me, before you start off, I have a question. We gave you permission to renovate that building...
Correct.
...to the Mexican restaurant. And then you came and unsputted on us, but I guess the town said all right for you to demolish it, which you did. But it seems to me the footprint has increased. It's not the same as what it was before and what we'd approved, so...
So I can address that.
I think that you should stop work until we get a public hearing on it to get a special use permit. I mean, it is not what you said you were going to do.
Okay, I can tell you, we didn't demolish it fully. We only took down the upper floor, so the footprint did not change.
What's that thing comes out in front?
That was actually approved by you guys. It's a vestibule, entrance vestibule, so it's on the approved plans.
Is that large?
Yeah, it was higher than, yeah, it was meant to be like a tower to kind of draw your eye to the building. So yes, it was on the approved plans. We did not, believe me, we did not, and I'll, you know, submit an as-built, whatever you guys want, but we did not increase the footprint.
Not at all.
Not at all.
Sure looks like it. Okay, go right ahead.
Well, let me address that concern first. We're going to come back in at a later date and just, one, we're going to take a look at the approved plans and make sure, and come back to you during construction before we finish to make sure everything is covered and there's no questions asked. So that'll be a separate application. You're welcome. So tonight, we're here, just if you recall, there was a, it would be the northeast corner, a segmental block retaining wall. We chose that product because it was existing on site. It was getting demolished from one part of the site and moving to the other side of the site. Kind of when we got ready to build it, we realized that we needed a guide rail to prevent cars from going over the edge, and it was just a challenge to, one, make it look good because we were at the point where we were putting six-by-six or eight-by-eight posts down in front of the wall, so you'd have these pressure-treated posts coming up, and we didn't feel that was going to look good. So anyway, we decided to go with a concrete reinforced retaining wall that we can secure safely, a guide rail to it. Similar wood guide rail, just fastened to a more structurally substantial product. I think there was a note in the review about thinking about different products or something. Just want to let you know that from, it's about a 32-foot-long by 15-foot-long L-shaped wall. At the corner, there's only about five feet exposed, and then it tapers down to zero at either end. So there's not a lot of wall showing. We do have an approved landscaping plan that'll cover up half, if not more, of it. We also removed some large pieces of ledge that we're going to use as decorative out in that area that'll break it up further. So I don't, I mean, we're happy to maybe rub it with, you know, make it like a rubbed look or do something different, but we really do need the reinforced concrete. That's the only change we're here for tonight.
Can you point out where the wall is on the...
Yeah, it's right on this corner.
Right there. Oh.
Actually allowed us to move the curb cut further from the intersection, flatten things out a little bit.
We're talking about the dark shaded area.
This here?
Right. Right here.
Okay, yeah.
That is the old, there's a separate detail I sent. I have extra copies of it. Well, if you look at the other one I handed you, that's the concrete wall, and then that steel post comes out of it and the wood's mounted to it, so the bulk of it you'll see from the street is wood.
Any questions? Gardner? No? Pete? Thank you. Do I have a motion on this application?
You wish to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're welcome. Look forward to seeing you in the other, straighten them out.
Thank you.
So item seven, Old Business, which is PZ 1920 CAM, Mitchell and Resina Strand. Cam application for 18 Skiff Lane Mystic. I recommend tabling that till the next meeting, which is it for Old Business.
The way the public hearing works is we'll have the applicant speak, and anyone in favor, and then those opposed, then we'll have the staff comments, and the applicant has a right to rebuttal.
Pursuant to the general statutes of the State of Connecticut, revision of 1958 and all amendments thereto, and pursuant to the zoning regulations for the town of Stonington, Connecticut, the Planning and Zoning Commission hereby gives notice that it will hold a public hearing at the Stonington Middle School, formerly known as Mystic Middle School, 204 Mystic Ave, Mystic, Connecticut, on Tuesday, September 3, 2019, at 7:21 on the following applications. PZ 1919 RA, Di Amato Investments Regulation Text Amendment to permit a dog daycare training center use in the LI-130, M-1, and M, I'm sorry, HM zoning districts.
Is anyone here from...
Yeah.
Oh, you're coming right up.
We should give our chair.
You want a chair? Are you applying?
Standing is good, thanks. Marjorie Line Weber from Ashway, Rhode Island. Let's see. So the proposed text amendment, hi Fred, how are you? The proposed text amendment is to allow the operation of a dog daycare and training center in the light industrial zones. The growth of dog daycare and training centers has grown tremendously over the last 20 years. By allowing this use in the proposed zones, it'll provide little environmental impact on the surrounding area and neighborhoods while offering good traffic flow, parking, and building size needed for this operation. Currently, our use does require the use of a state kennel and training center license, and the dog daycare and training facility that we're asking for is not a specific use as allowed by the town currently, so by making this a specific use, it would fit into these zones much better. Currently, where we're located, there are a lot of parking issues. We are located around residences, and over the years of being in business, we found that having, being in another zone might be a much better fit for our business. So functionally, this use would fit well in the industrial manufacturing zones due to the ease of traffic flow. With the dog daycare and training center, there are a lot of cars coming and going during drop-off time and for classes coming in and out. In industrial or manufacturing zone, there's much better traffic flow than being in, say, a commercial zone or a residential zone. So this would be a much better fit. And again, because this use, daycare and training, is not specifically defined currently in the town of Stonington, it's not allowed in the industrial or manufacturing zones, so that's why we're asking for this text amendment. This proposal would also allow this type of business to expand, therefore offering greater services to the people of the town, as well as increasing the tax base, offering more employment opportunities for more people of the area, and allowing the business to grow. Currently, in our current situation, there's not a lot of room for growth, so by being in a situation where the business could grow, we can also grow that tax base, offer better services to the clients, and offer more employment. This proposal would also update and modernize the language by defining this use. Basically, these services didn't exist over 20 years ago and have always fallen under either personal services or kennel use, but because this business has grown all over the U.S. in the last 20 years, by defining it as daycare and training center, it would make it a better fit. Let's see. The industrial manufacturing zones, also the impact on the surrounding areas would be a better fit because of, again, traffic flow, there is some noise associated with dog daycare and training, so being in an industrial or manufacturing zone, that impact on the surrounding area is much less than in, say, a commercial zone or a residential zone. Let's see. Then, just in conclusion, again, as I've stated, but just to kind of wrap it up, dog daycare and training industry has grown at a fever pace over the last 20 years due to the increasingly long workdays for many families. Many, many more families owning dogs and making those dogs a part of their life, not just the dog tied out in the backyard, but really, they enjoy these dogs being part of their family life. And so there's a much greater demand for our type of business, and by offering daycare and then training services, it does allow these dogs to be a greater part of the family and to be better community members as well, too.
Just one, as I understood the material that was supplied to us before the meeting, you're planning to move to Togwank Road?
Correct.
Why change the zoning for three districts?
I believe that was a recommendation from the town, so that, and my understanding of what we, we also did this same thing in East Lime last year, and the recommendation, and as I understood it from the zoning people there, was that it, text amendment wouldn't be to specifically fit just our business, but to be a better fit for our services in general, to also fit other businesses that also do the same thing we do. So we're not trying to pigeonhole just our business, but open it up to other locations that also fit that overall need, the better traffic flow, the less impact on surrounding businesses. So those other zones also offer those same things, better traffic, less impact on surrounding environments. Right. Yep.
Your current zone is by special use permit?
Yep, and is considered personal services.
Okay.
Yep, yes. That was over 20 years ago that that was allowed, so again, there was no place to put dog daycare and training, so that's how it was allowed, yes. Yep. All right, yes.
Anyone else?
Good evening. I'm a landowner at 296 Togwank Road in the famous LI 130, exit 91, Togwank Road, and I'm here tonight to tell you that a well-exercised dog is a good dog, and I would be happy to have Marge in her business as a neighbor. I think it's a perfect fit. If you think of daycare and people kind of coming and going and dropping off and picking up, it's a route one in Mystic where actually my business was located. We got squeezed out by traffic, and it's thick getting in and out of that location by sea swirl, and interchange is the best place, and obviously, there's space for her, and I think it's a great fit. I enjoy coming to my office early in the morning and hearing Wes Maxwell's donkeys. They don't bother me at all, and these are additional animals, and who doesn't love their dog? And to have a place that they could be a good citizen in the community, well-behaved, well-exercised, and it is a very popular business. The dog industry is in the tunes of billions of dollars, and you know, everyone here in this room loves their dogs, and I would welcome Marge to the neighborhood, and I hope that the commission says welcome Marge to the neighborhood in the LI 130 tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in favor? Anyone opposed this application?
I haven't got the general comments yet.
I'll speak in favor. Ben Tamski, 5 Edgemont Street in Mystic. I didn't really come prepared to speak about this at all, and I'm not that familiar with the application, but I am concerned, as Mr. Dykman stated, having three zones where it's not allowed specifically in any zone now. I think you should tread lightly and take it one step at a time, much the way we did when we wrote new regulations for having chickens in residential zones, things like that. I mean, you know, if they need, if the applicant is wishing to move into the LI 130 zone, I think you should consider approving it for that zone and wait until there's a need for the other zones. I think it should be by special use permit because I think that there could be potential problems with that type of business in certain neighborhoods, and particularly in the M1 and HM zones where they can be bounded by residential zones. There could be a negative impact, so either those zones should be kept out for the time being, or allowed by special use permits, which you can consider the actual specific sites and the conditions of that particular site. So, thank you.
Carleen Donarumo.
For the record, my name is Carleen Donarumo. I do not own a dog. I'm a cat person. However, I can see that there is a need in our town for this because it has not been addressed previously. I'm just a little confused, though, because they have to go to the state and get a kennel license and a training facility license. And to me, a kennel has always been a place where you bring your dog to board, and they stay overnight. And maybe that's not her intention, but if we're going to make this regulation and we don't have a place where we allow this, I think the regulation should include the ability to board overnight. And the other thing is that, I guess it was proposed for no pet grooming. Well, if you're going to provide all these services, I agree with Mr. Bryant's recommendation to add pet grooming back and include it in the regulation. We might as well be inclusive and include everything. And I just want to point out on page 14 of 36 in the planner's report, 6.6.25.8, it says the commission may require buffers and screening of adjacent residential property as per section, and the section number is missing. Okay, you might want to add that. And I agree with the waste management should be added into the requirements, whether it's grooming or just picking up after the dog, there has to be some way of getting rid of the doggy doo. So that's basically what I would like you to consider. Adding back, letting them board overnight may not be her plan, but somebody else may come into the other zones if you don't, if you... if you don't agree with Ben that they shouldn't be in the other zones. I don't think I have a problem with that because if you're coming in with a special use permit, you have the ability to deny it if you feel it's not the proper place for it because of residential or noise or environmental problems. Thank you.
So just to point out that this regulation does have this use as being a special use permit use. So when someone wants to set up shop, they'll have to come before you as a special use permit. And as far as allowing it in other industrial zones in town, there are other things that are built into the regulation above and beyond what zone you're in. Like, two of the main things is that you need a minimum lot size of two acres. So that sort of knocks out of contention some of the smaller M1 zones out there that might not be too appropriate for this. The other thing is that you need a standalone business, standalone building for the business just because of the concern of barking dogs bothering the people, other people in the building. So if you think of some of the larger industrial mill complexes in town, you wouldn't be able to do it in there, but you'd be able to do it in buildings that are just standalone. So that knocks a lot of buildings and sites out of contention also. So with that, it seems like the other industrial zones wouldn't be too much, especially considering Ms. Line Weber's testimony that she didn't want to sort of monopolize this use for herself and not have anybody else be able to do it in town. On page 22 of the report here are some recommended alternatives to the language here. And none of these are crucial things that need to be included for you to approve this. They're just recommended tweaks. One of them, as Ms. Donarumo stated, is getting rid of the language that says no pet grooming is allowed just because it is a common accessory use to these businesses. Adding language in there that says retail sales and pet grooming are allowed as accessory uses as long as they're limited to 10% of the total building square footage each. Adding a detailed waste management plan, taking into consideration disposal of solid waste and stormwater impacts. And also the other thing was a parking standard. Unlike some common things like retail and office, our zoning regulations don't have a parking standard for a doggy daycare. It's a pretty new use. If you scan, if you search the internet for what other towns use, there's very little out there. You can see some of the examples that I found, and they're sort of all over the place. They use different metrics as far as building size and number of employees and different, different measures. From a practical point of view, when you look at the building they want to go to, anything more demanding than one space per 400 square feet of gross floor area would be a problem. So that seemed like a reasonable, reasonable standard to recommend is adding the standard in there for a minimum of one space per 400 square feet of gross floor area. We sent this out to different groups for comment. One we received from DEP's Office of Long Island Sound Programs. Their comments, which they always ask us to read, is that the proposed amendment will allow dog daycare, training centers, industrial and heritage mill zoning districts. We strongly recommend that any open water areas, streams, brooks, rivers, ponds, inland and tidal wetland areas be fenced off on properties dedicated to this use to avoid sewage issues and contamination of open water. There is no conflict with the Connecticut Coastal Management Act. And Ms. Donarumo pointed out the missing reference there. It should say section 6.5.1, and that is included in the applicant's regulation amendment. It just wasn't included when I retyped it in the report, so it is officially in there. Also, kennels, which do allow overnight boarding, are in allowed use in our zoning regulations. They're not allowed in the commercial zones. They're allowed by special use permit in certain residential zones. So it seemed like when these were written into the zoning regulations years ago, they were sort of allowed in the same zones as farms, in the more low-density residential zones. So there are places in town where someone could have a full-blown kennel with overnight boarding, but that's, that's not what they are looking for here. And as far as the decisions tonight with this application, it is a decision on the application's conformance with the P O C D and a decision on the regulation, the regulation amendment itself here.
Keith, just one question. By standalone building, is it either implied or explicit that the building's sole purpose is for dog care, or can it be a mixed-use building like the Velvet Mill, for example?
Yeah, it's not, it's not specifically spelled out. It just says a standalone building is required. So if you had any sort of recommended language to...
Well, then, so my follow-on question then with regarding parking, is it, it seems that the parking should somehow be related to the number of pets that are being kept there. I mean, I suppose people could have dozens and dozens of pets. It seems unlikely, but perhaps that's a better ratio is the number of, the size of the use of the building, whether it's explicitly for dog care, the number of pets, and then the square footage related to parking.
Yeah, I mean... People start to park. Yeah, but it's, it's my way that parking is not a big deal because basically, as Dave said, it's a drop-off situation. You, you drive up, you take your dog in, give it to the, you know, sign little papers or whatever and say goodbye and go out, and you come back in the afternoon and pick it up. So I mean, it's not...
Right, but all to eat at the same time.
Not necessary.
Well, we should hear from...
I can kind of help answer some of these questions for you. So in the dog industry, there is kind of a general rule of thumb as square feet per dog, you know, 100 square feet per dog. So the square footage of the building in our industry does kind of mandate how many dogs could be there. But similarly, like you were talking about, it's that drop off and pick up. And so the square footage of the building does kind of dictate how many dogs would be there, but also taking into consideration the training aspect. You know, you could have classes going on. So again, the parking would be relative to the square footage of the training spaces and how many people would be coming and going.
The permit you received from the state, I can't remember its name...
It's licensing.
Licensing. Does that stipulate square footage per dog?
It, it does not, but they do, they do inspect us now. It's every two years, and we do get an inspection, and they look for those, those sorts of things. The kennel license, I know there were some questions about the kennel license. So the kennel license, what the state kennel license allows is dogs to be left in our care. The kennel license is not, does not mean overnight boarding. We are required by the state to carry a kennel license because dogs are left in our care. It's a, and we're paid for it. So that's what the state kennel license covers. The training license allows us to hold training classes, so that's why we carry those, too. The state kennel license does allow for overnight boarding, but we are restricted in our current two locations by town zoning that we do not do overnights. We're not opposed to the idea of grooming being allowed in the general use of this. We do not do grooming. But again, it is one of those accessory pieces that some businesses like ours do offer. We, it is another license that is required by the state, and part of the reason that we don't do it is because it does mean more dogs coming and going, being dropped off and picked up throughout the day, where we have the one drop-off time and the one pickup time, and then classes coming in maybe in the evenings. But grooming would mean a little bit more traffic flow and more dirty water disposal as well, too, you know? So all those dogs being washed, and then you have to take in septic or, you know, town, you know, what are the situations there? So that's just not something that we as a business want to get into, but I wouldn't be opposed to, you know, in the genuine, general idea of it being something that could be allowed. And yes, we are required to carry a special permit in, in our current location in East Lime as well, too. So, so then that, it's that more site-specific requirements. So that should take out a lot of the concerns, you know, of some of, some of the comments from people because it would be, the special use permit would then specifically talk about that site when that happens, so.
Question for Keith. Regarding grooming, was there any discussion about the impact on the sewage system? I mean, as the applicant pointed out, that's, you know, greater use of water and sewage. So by allowing grooming, I mean, are we, was there any discussion?
No, it would just be, have to be something that would be looked at on a case-by-case basis. Some of these would have public sewer and some like Togwank Spur don't...
Well, I, I think, being a former kennel owner in my life, you know, if you have doggy daycare, which we didn't do, we had an actual kennel, you know, if you drop a dog off, you can say, could you give him a bath, please? I mean, I just, I mean, you may not do that, but I mean, it's, I could see...
Sure.
That a doggy daycare center would offer that to its clients, like, you know, I bring my dog in, hey, could you give her a bath when I pick her up? And, you know, you may not do that. That may not be your thing. That's fine. But somebody in your line of business...
Correct, yes.
Might be willing to...
Yes, and some do.
I think grooming should be included, should be permitted. Again, not that you do it, but as you concur, it could be done in your line of business.
Correct, some do. Our, our business is more training, our, our heart of our business is training, and daycare is a takeoff on that, where some places are kennel or daycare, and then they reach out into that grooming arm unlike us. Yep, absolutely, yep.
Any other questions?
All right, thanks.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote. Do you hear a motion on this application?
Make a motion to approve the application.
Do you hear a second? Is this with grooming?
With, with grooming.
Yeah, let, let, are we going to include the grooming part of it in the, in the regulation? Sorry, we're a little short on mics. You know, I think, I think we should, where am I going to find this document? I think we should permit grooming as part of this...
Yeah, well, this is where we have, on page 22.
All right, right here, I got it, I got it. You see a lot better for the... Yeah, okay, there is. Yeah, so I think we should...
Why don't we make the motion?
Make the motion.
Okay, so we did it, we did...
Please move forward, yes.
Oh, all right. So I move to approve the application, the, my, the application to the new text regarding doggy daycare and training centers and removing 6.6.25.5, referring that no, no pet grooming is allowed. And going with the other changes as submitted by staff for the application.
And, and the parking space in the...
Okay, and also include the parking as recommended by staff.
Do you hear a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The effective date for that is September 23, 2019.
No, we're not taking a break.
Can I read the next one?
Yeah, go ahead.
Next application, PZ 1915 SUP, Whalers Inn Acquisition LLC. Special use permit application to increase existing seating in former restaurant from 60 to 100 seats and operate under a hotel liquor permit with the possible merger of the two lots. Properties located at 20 East Main Street and 9 Cotrell Street Mystic. Accessors map 182 block four, lots 13 and 3, zone DB-5.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Bill Sweeney. I'm a partner and a land use attorney at the law firm of Tobin Carberry in New London, Connecticut. Thank you again for the opportunity to appear before you tonight. I'm here on behalf of Whalers Inn Operations LLC, which is the operator of the Whalers Inn located at 20 East Main Street in Mystic, Connecticut. Joining me tonight is Amanda Arling, who's the president and general manager of the Whalers Inn. Pending before the commission this evening is a special use permit application requesting approval for two distinct requests. The first is to operate the entire premises at the Whalers Inn under a state hotel liquor permit. And the second is to increase the maximum seating of the restaurant within the hotel from 60 to 100 seats. It should be noted that in our application that there are no exterior changes to the site, and there's no site work proposed as part of our special permit application. This is a fairly straightforward request, and I'll try to be brief, including my review of the applicable parking requirements for the project based on past variances granted for the site. Before I delve into the details of that request, I do want to apologize to the commission for the delay in moving forward with this hearing. I do understand that our application was slated to be heard at last month's meetings, but the town attorney did express some concern with our initial proposal, which included the adjacent property located at 9 Cotrell Street. Due to the vacation schedules of Attorney Landrigan and myself, we were unable to meet until, like, actually early last week to resolve those concerns. And as a result of that meeting, we formally amended our application last week to remove 9 Cotrell Street altogether from the application and to supplement the record with information regarding the past approvals for the property and especially variances, namely a 2000, a year 2000 variance that was granted for the property as requested by the town attorney. I know it can be very boring to listen to me sometimes drone on, so as, I've tried to provide some handouts for you to look at that I colored up that might help you explain a little bit of what we're trying to do as I go through it tonight. So this time, I'd like to submit this as an exhibit into the record. The first request that we've made tonight is to approve a state hotel liquor permit to govern the entire property. The property at East, 20 East Main Street has encompassed the Whalers Inn for many years, but it's also been home to a number of other tenants over the last few decades, including several independently owned and operated restaurants and outdoor cafes which serve liquor. These tenant restaurant and cafe operations, most recently the former Bravo Bravo space, were legally separate from the hotel, and they operated under their own state restaurant and cafe liquor permits. As some of you may remember, in 2018, the Whalers Inn was approved by this commission for its own tavern liquor permit, which limited alcohol sales to wine and beer only within the area of its new lobby. Up until this point, the Whalers Inn has been ineligible for a state hotel liquor permit because of the requirement in the state statutes that it must have its own kitchen and dining room under its own exclusive control to be eligible for that permit class. As you know, earlier this year, Bravo... As you know, earlier this year, Bravo Bravo left the Whalers Inn property and relocated to its new premises across East Main Street. Now, that relocation does not change the use of that space within the hotel, nor does it change the approvals that were granted for that space in the Whalers Inn. That space is currently under renovations and my client now intends to reopen the restaurant under its own exclusive control. And in doing so, we're finally eligible for a hotel liquor permit for the entire premises at 20 East Main Street, which would govern both the restaurant and the hotel, and for the very first time allow Whalers Inn to provide room service with liquor sales. This is really an important upgrade in the quality of services that we can provide our guests. As you can imagine, we have a lot of couples, we have a lot of visitors that come to the Inn, and the ability, after you come in perhaps late at night, and to order a bottle of wine with your dinner and have it served to your room is really important for the level and the quality of hotel that we're trying to operate. We also think it complements the multimillion-dollar improvements and other enhancements that the new ownership group has made to the hotel over the last few years. Perhaps more importantly, for your purposes and in all reality, this change will essentially be invisible to the public. With the exception of the provision of room service, nothing else would functionally change on the site, except that for the first time, you'll have a single state liquor permit governing the entire property. Now, along with the transition to the hotel liquor permit, we're also looking to increase the seating for the restaurant space from 60 seats to 100 seats by creating a second special event dining room. And that's on the first page of the handout that I showed you. The former Bravo Bravo space is shown in yellow and the new dining room area is shown in orange. As I mentioned previously, the 60-seat restaurant that was formerly Bravo Bravo is already approved and it can be reopened tomorrow without any additional permits or approvals. The request before you tonight is to permit an additional 40 seats in the adjacent room, separated from the main dining room by a pocket door, to be used for special events and overflow seating. This area is currently used as meeting space for the hotel, and if you've ever stayed or had stayed at the hotel in years past, it was formerly used for continental breakfast service for hotel guests. Over the last couple of years, there has been a growing demand observed for corporate events and dinners, as well as private parties and similar small events at the hotel. For the most of the year, this extra dining room would be used primarily for these types of activities. It's a relatively small space, it's only a few hundred square feet in size, but it's perfectly sized for a corporate retreat, an anniversary, a rehearsal dinner, or another intimate affair. In the peak summer tourist season, the room could also be made available for general overflow seating on weekends, when many restaurants in Mystic experience significant business and long waiting times. In reality, though, outside of that busy tourist season, we would expect that the second dining room might actually be closed on many evenings, particularly in the week, when business simply doesn't demand the additional seats to be made available. I should note that we're not trying to create a late-night venue with the reopening of the restaurant, and we intend to voluntarily curtail late-night hours to protect the privacy and the peace of our hotel guests, many of which are located directly above this restaurant space. In years past, many of these rooms were previously disturbed by the late-night bar scene at Bravo Bravo. In fact, we believe we'll be closing the restaurant and bar by 11:00 PM on most summer weekdays and by 12:00 midnight on most summer weekends, and likely even earlier during the off-season based on demand. The 60-seat restaurant was improved originally by this commission with 12 employees, which is more than is required to man this fairly small space served by a similarly small kitchen. However, to be conservative, we've proposed to increase the maximum number of employees for both dining rooms together to 15 employees during the peak summer shift. The 40 new seats in the new dining room and the three new employees would typically require 13 additional parking spaces per your zoning regulations. However, we're not proposing to construct any new spaces, as we're entitled to increase our seating based on a previously approved variance for the site that dates back to 2000. You can turn to the second page in my handout that breaks down these numbers that I'll be talking about. As I mentioned earlier, the property located at 20 East Main Street has been long been used for the Whalers Inn, but over the last several decades, it's also been utilized for retail, office, and multiple iterations of indoor and outdoor restaurant uses. And throughout that time, it's provided limited onsite parking, actually no more than the 40 spaces that currently exist on the site today. And that was allowed as a result of pre-existing non-conforming conditions and actual parking reductions to the site that was approved by this commission in 1978. In 2000, the then owners of the property undertook a major renovation project to expand the hotel, close the 100-seat outdoor café Bravo, and build the Hoxie House, which is the portion of the Inn where the lobby now sits on the first floor. And on August 8th of 2000, the Stonington Zoning Board of Appeals approved a variance recorded at volume 453, page 508 of the land records, granting the property an increase in Florida area ratio, and more importantly for our discussion tonight, a reduction in the required parking for the reconfigured uses, which at that time included 49 hotel rooms, the 60-seat restaurant, and just under 1,700 square feet of retail space. Some of you may remember the jewelry store was there, and there was also CC Bagel back in the day as well, and those were part of that retail space. Counting the employees back in 2000, the parking demand for all of these uses combined was 94 parking spaces. In their decision granting the variance, the board identified the 40 existing onsite parking spaces that are still there today, and also gave the property owner credit for 16 on-street parking spaces, something that was both permitted here in Stonington at the time and was also a common practice for many of the restaurants in Mystic, and effectively granted an additional variance to the site of 38 parking spaces. Arguably, the variance application that was submitted and was, quote, "approved as presented" actually included a variance of 44 spaces. But we're trying to be conservative, and we discussed the matter with staff, we believe that the 38 spaces accurately depicts the difference between the actual parking demand at the time in 2000 and what parking existed or was explicitly credited by the board in their decision. As you should be aware, I know some of you served on the Zoning Board of Appeals, a recorded variance does not expire. It runs in perpetuity with the land to the benefit of all successor owners. That variance that was granted 19 years ago is in effect today, and it is a vested property right that my client can utilize going forward for their use of the property. It's also notable that since 2000, the actual parking demand for the property has decreased with other subsequent renovations to the hotel and the elimination of the retail uses. Today, the Whalers Inn only has 45 rooms. We've lost a couple more recently as a result of the renovations that have been recently completed, and all the former retail space, the jewelry store, the bagel shop, that has all been repurposed for hotel common areas, which do not have any required parking demand. These changes, when coupled with the proposed expansion of the restaurant seating and the new restaurant employees, have a total calculated parking demand of 91 spaces, which is three less than what was approved under the 2000 variance. So in other words, the realized reduction in demand over the last 19 years is more than adequate to now accommodate and offset the expansion in restaurant seating, and actually creates a less non-conforming condition for the property. The 2000 variance provides a legal basis for increasing the seating in the restaurant without providing any new additional parking, and that's a position that your town attorney has reviewed and has most recently concurred with fully. I want to thank you for your time and your attention this evening. I would remind you that the application before you is limited solely to 20 East Main Street, not any other properties that the Whalers Inn or Whaler Inn affiliates make, own, or control. I'd also remind you that we've requested a number of waivers in connection with our application due to the lack of any site work or exterior changes, really the inapplicability of those requirements to the application. I'm available if you have any questions. Ms. Arling is also available if you have any operational questions. We would ask for you to close the hearing tonight and render a decision approving the special permit application. I want to thank you for your time tonight, and I would reserve the right to rebuttal.
I have a question. Can you break down exactly who the 15 restaurant employees are, like between bartenders, host, server, bussar, cooks, just to get a better idea?
I don't know if I can do that with Ms. Arling's help. I know the 12 that were approved for the current Bravo Bravo include kitchen staff, bartenders, wait service, and bus boys, and they typically, based on my conversations with the Canabas'es, didn't use the full 12. We've got 40 new seats, which effectively, if you look at our layout, and this is a conceptualized layout, we've got 12 new 6, 8, 12 new tables. So we said, listen, even if we can service it with the 12 that we have, we're going to say three more employees, basically at peak, if everything's full, each one of those servers has four additional tables. So those three additional were really three more servers for the special event space. Reality is, if you look at the special event space, we show 40 seats in it. It's tight. Whether we actually have 40 seats in that area at the end of the day, probably it's going to be less than that. It can't be more than that because we haven't asked for more. We're probably going to be in the area, quite frankly, between 25 and 40 will be how many seats will be in that area, but we showed this for just demonstration purposes.
Any other questions?
East Main Street is along the top of the diagram, is it?
Yes, sir. And the main entrance, just to be clear, the main entrance to the restaurant will be through the existing space from East Main Street. There is an interior entrance to the existing space as well, it'll be double doors, that's sort of through the common hallway system that runs through the hotel. And then the entrance to the private space, there are separate entrances for fire access, but that's not a main entrance, there's not a hostess stand over there. You've got to come through the existing Bravo Bravo space. Like I said, I expect, if you visit in January or December during the week, this area will probably be closed off on most weekday nights, just because there isn't the demand at that time of the year for the additional seating.
Any other questions?
Just one. In addition to room service, does the hotel liquor permit enable other provisions or uses? Does it come with other benefits?
No. What it does is allows us to serve liquor within the effective hours set forth by the State Liquor Commission, anywhere within premises located on the hotel parcel. So you know that there's several buildings on the site, there's really a campus-like environment, so that would allow us to provide room service within any of those buildings. Would also allow us to serve, like we do, we have the ability from this commission to serve somebody a glass of wine in the lobby, that you can do that under the hotel liquor permit because it's part of the premises.
How late can you serve people in their room?
Under state law, you can go as long as the hotel permit which allows you, which I believe is 1:00 AM on most nights and 2:00 AM on Fridays and Saturdays. We're not going to serve liquor that late, nor are we going to serve room service that late, like most hotels. We intend to cut it off long before then. But that's what the state law allows you to do.
That would be allowed?
Under the state law, that would be what we would be allowed to do. The reality is, is in the last couple of years of the Bravo Bravo lease, we had a number, and particularly since the new ownership group took over and did the renovations, we had several issues with conflicts between the Bravo Bravo space and our guest rooms above that space. And so we have, for the first time, we actually operate the restaurant and the bar, and we have a vested interest in avoiding late-night opportunities. We've actually had to, unfortunately, credit or basically wipe the charges for rooms when people couldn't sleep because of noise underneath them. And so by controlling that, we can now safely and provide the privacy that we want to those rooms. And I think if you had been out to the Whalers Inn, if you've taken the time to go out there, even if just to walk through the lobby, and certainly if you ever stay there, it is a much different venue than it was even three or four years ago. The multimillion-dollar renovation of the site, they're really trying to increase the quality of the Inn, the clientele, and they're trying to provide a much higher-end product. And I think this goes a long way of taking control of that tenant space and making part of the hotel.
Phil, just for my clarification, the entrance into the existing, the old Bravo Bravo, the entrance into the existing old Bravo Bravo would be on the left-hand side here?
Yes.
I mean, that's like a captain's station, that little...
That's going to be sort of the hostess station on that left side. There was another entrance. When Bravo Bravo was working, there was another entrance, but that's been closed off. It's part of the renovations of the front. That was sort of central, you can see that on my drawing, it's like a box, that's X.
Exit, where the exit?
Yeah, so we boxed that off and restored sort of the historic window there.
We proved that a couple of months ago, I think.
It's part of the exterior changes that included the stairwell on the back that blocks the windows in two rooms and dropped our hotel room.
The elevator, the exit.
So the entrance to the restaurant will be on the left there?
Correct. But there is an entrance, I should just say, there is an internal entrance as well from the back, you know, and you can go through from the back parking lot into its common hallway and then through the restaurant.
I see that. Then will the entrance still stay into the additional space, the new dining room?
That'll be exit only.
That'll be exit, so in other words...
Yep, so for fire code reasons.
All right, so that, the thing on the right here, that's a door, that's going to be exit only.
The one that goes out to East Main Street, sir, yes.
And then you're going to have two internal entrances?
One will be from the common hallway, and then one is the pocket door, so that if we're having a private event, we can...
These two are going to be...
Yes, I'm sorry, those two, yes, those are internal.
Pocket door, but to get it, in other words, if I'm coming for dinner, I'll go through this entrance on the left side.
You're going to go, yes, you're going to go to the entrance to the yellow area, and when you're seated, if we're doing, let's say it's the middle of August and we're in overflow mode, and the only seats are over in the orange section, you'd be led over and brought to your table. However, if, for instance, there was a corporate event in town and they had rented out a block of rooms and they were doing a seminar, this is how we're thinking, we're doing seminar and then dinner afterwards, that pocket door might be closed altogether, closed for private event.
Any other questions? Anyone like to speak in favor? Anyone like to make a statement? Anyone like to speak against this application? On the general comments, I have Phil Scher.
Phil Scher for Haley Street. I spent 10 to 12 hours going over all the variants, it looks like it's wrapped up pretty tight here, and it looks like it's perfectly legal. I'd like to say that what I'm going to talk about tonight is just parking in general, that if we look at the number of spaces that are with variance and on-street, it comes out to 51 spaces. If we take all of the spaces around that entire block on both sides of the street, all four streets, Main, Cotrell, Haley, and Willow, we only have like 42 spaces, so it just gives you some idea of how bad parking is. So we need to do something in town, parking rules, and that we've obviously done a bad job of assigning parking where it's needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Roberts.
Peggy Roberts with the Greater Mystic Chamber of Commerce. I'm here to urge you to grant the Whalers Inn permission to do this. They are, number one, the best kind of business neighbor you could possibly have. They're very, very supportive of the community in general, and I think that goes a long way toward helping them with their business venture. I know that parking is an issue in Mystic, it will always be an issue until we are with driverless cars, and that is not in the too distant future. So I would let you know that there is a working group that is dealing with trying to find alternate parking in the Mystic area. I am on that group, the chief of police in Stonington and in Groton is on the group. We also have people from the town hall on the group, and we are working on getting small pockets, which we'll let you know how well we're doing pretty soon. Keep in mind, we have Uber and Lyft, so not everybody's parking, some people are getting dropped off. And I just want to say one more thing, because I've come to a lot of these public hearings in recent history, and I hope we are not trying to discourage development in this town, because it's starting to feel like it's a little bit in jeopardy. And as a representative... And as a representative of a business advocacy group, I would like to see us protect the opportunity for business to take advantage of their new ventures and to keep Mystic on the right track, and Stonington on the right track. Thank you.
Is this Jim McCombs? I can sign on this sheet by... Okay, let me in, thank you. All right, my name's Rod Demaris, I live at Two Bay Street, Mystic, Connecticut, on Stonington's side. I also own the property of eleven Cotrell Street, which is in a butter to the Whaler Inn's property, particularly the former John's Tavern property and the two buildings on Haley Street. So I'm basically surrounded by the Whalers Inn's project. First, I'd like to say I really appreciate what they have done on their project. They have done a first-class job, they have poured a lot of money into that building and their operation, and it is an improvement over what was there before. And I understand their need for some of the things that they're asking for here, I understand the need to bring alcohol to your room guests for a class act hotel of that stature, that seems to be something that everybody would expect, so I kind of agree with that. There's a couple of things that I'm concerned with, and one is that not too long ago, I was at a presentation by the Architectural Review part of this town, and there was an application or a proposal being presented for discussion of a new restaurant being where the John's Tavern was. Am I to understand that that is no longer on the table, that proposal?
I'll answer rebuttal.
Okay, so I'm concerned about that, because if they had proposed in that application, maybe I shouldn't go on if that is not the case any longer, but if it is, did you answer whether that's part of your proposals? Okay, so I'm very concerned that if they're going to increase the seating of a sixty-seat restaurant to a hundred-seat restaurant, and then go forward next month or later this year or next year with another restaurant on the other location for, that application was looking for a hundred-and-twenty seats, I think now we're crowding the issue here about what we need to do, or what we need to look at. The attorney mentioned that because in 2000, they granted a variance going down from ninety-four required seats down to forty, and now that they're only asking for, have a requirement of ninety-three seats, so they have more than adequate parking, because they had adequate of parking back in 2000, well, 2019's a different town of Stonington and Mystic than it was in 2000. I don't think there's anybody in this room or anybody that lives in this community that will deny the fact that we are much more crowded with parking and busyness in downtown nineteen years since that variance was approved. So I understand the variances go with the land, and I understand it's all legal, but there's some thought that this commission should have about increasing further in those regards. Now, that being said, we live in a different world today, that being said, do I really believe that forty more seats in that restaurant is going to create a parking dilemma for downtown or more traffic downtown? No, I do not. I believe that it will accommodate the people that are already downtown and already found their parking spaces and so forth. So I don't want to be misconstrued that I'm opposing this application, because this application in itself, with forty more seats, is going to be, have a terribly negative impact on the community and should be denied because of that. I don't believe that at all. But I am concerned with what moves forward with this development. I had three buildings beside my building, two of them were historic buildings, John's Tavern and one of the buildings on Haley Street, those were all torn down in about a two-week period of time. Now, when I received notice as in a butter that those permits for demolition were being, or had been signed, and demolition was pending on it, I reviewed those documents, and the document that was signed by these applicants, by Whalers Inn, agreed in the building permit that they would not tear down a building for ninety days if it had historic significance. They did not do that, okay? The town conveniently reconvened and changed their mentality that that was just a building code regulation, and it wasn't part of the zoning code, so it couldn't be enforced. So I am concerned about the future of what they're doing here and the implications of this, it seems as if it's a step-by-step kind of process for the developer here, and I just want to make sure that every step along the way doesn't pave the way for something that we may not want further down the road, saying, well, we got approved for this, now we're changing those hundred seats over there and so forth. So those are my concerns, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Swainy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll be brief. I've gotten to know Bill Shear pretty well over the last year and respect him greatly, even though we don't always see eye-to-eye on everything, and I agree with him, there is a larger parking issue in Mystic, and it's come out, you know, from the public's concerns about it. Every great small city and large city in the Northeast, if you look at them, the ones that are successful have municipal parking facilities, Stonington doesn't. We don't even have what Groton has with the Mystic Art Association in terms of a common lot. And so I certainly think that something needs to be done long-term, and whether it's in Broadway Avenue, where we are encouraging our employees to park, and where some of our employees are now parking for the first time. And I'm happy to hear Peggy Roberts' report about the task force that's looking at the issue. I believe the answer is satellite parking of a variety of small lots that will help offset some of the demand, particularly from employees of businesses, and also alleviate some of the congestion of residential neighborhoods. In terms of Rod's comments, I know Rod very well, we've talked many times, or at least through our attorneys, about his properties, and as some of you know, and I actually met with some members of the commission, to talk about a plan to rebuild John's Cafe last year and earlier this year, for a number of reasons, we put that plan to the side. And, one, the Bravo Bravo leaving, two, the cost of doing that project, and three, the timeframes that would be required to actually get that building up and operating. And it's so important for this business, Whalers Inn has really turned itself around in the last couple of years, and we're hoping to continue positive success, an actual make-a-profit at the location, which didn't happen for very many years. And part of that requires us to be able to serve our customers with breakfast, to have things like room service, and the Bravo Bravo space was the quickest way for us to get that up and going and have the quality type of services we need. So we do not have plans at this time for anything at the John's Cafe site or any other site, to answer the question. If we do have plans in the future to do that, it'll have to be compliant with your regulations as they exist at that time and state law. I agree with Mr. Demaris that forty additional parking spaces is a drop in the bucket, I mean, forty additional seats at the restaurant is a drop in the bucket in the Greater Mystic area, and it certainly will help this site be more productive and be economically viable. In regards to demolition, I would just say that that's not before you tonight, those are other properties, and I don't have any other further comment on that issue. I'm available if you have any other final questions. Thank you, go ahead.
Just one, what hours of operation are you proposing?
So we believe, our application said that we'll follow the state liquor laws, but in reality, we expect, as I said before, to be closing sometime, the restaurant operation to be closing around 11:00 PM during the weekends and at midnight on weekends. And in off-season, it may be earlier, but again, we've sort of got to judge that based on the demand for the restaurant. But it will not be, we don't see in any scenario we're going to be open past midnight.
Any other questions?
So as far as your comments we received here, as was mentioned, we had comments, well, two rounds of comments from the town attorney, the most recent ones basically agreed with this approach of looking at the 2000 variance to establish the parking and number of seats. The first comments from the town attorney basically said that they didn't agree with the whole John's Cafe shifting of seats, so that was removed from the application. As far as the recommended stipulations, if you approve this here on page thirty-five of the staff report, number one, the town's maximum seating notice must be posted in a conspicuous location inside the restaurant. Number two, no amplified live entertainment or outdoor seats are permitted with this application, which they're not proposing. And number three, hours of operation for the restaurant shall not exceed, and what I heard was 11:00 PM for on weekdays and 12:00 AM for weekends. WPCA looked at this and said that because of the seats at John's Cafe, their moratorium wouldn't affect this, so they wouldn't have to wait for that run out, that to run out. Town of Groton's planning commission had no comment. And that is, yeah, it's about it for this.
Did you say the town attorney agreed that the variance from 2000 applies as portrayed here?
Right, right.
Okay, and you do?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would just put for the record that we have no objection to the conditions that Mr. Bryant has put forward, and we would voluntarily agree to those hours of operation, particularly if it addresses any concerns, certainly it's not something that we want to do, is be part of that late-night scene. Thank you.
Do you have a motion to approve the application?
Motion to approve the application with the stipulations.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion?
And that just includes the waiver requests also.
Need more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any motion to adjourn?
Aye.